To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
And welcome to the August 28, 2018 County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are in the white folder on the end of the counter. And if you need a listening device, Craig can help you with that. He's in the front. Move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meeting minutes from August 21, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $689,575.79.
Pay the bills.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for July 2018. And that's on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is City of the Baltic Notice to Minnehaha County on applications for compost permit number S- or permit with S-D-D-E-N-A. And that's just notice. Item number eight is a planning and zoning notice. There are none. Item number nine is compromise of lien. There are none. Next is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda. And I don't see anybody. Okay? We'll go on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to authorize Emergency Management Director to enter into a sub recipient agreement with the South Dakota Department of Health. Lynn, hi.
Questioners. Lynn Young, Emergency Management. As you know, we've worked with this grant for four or five years. We're the fiduciary for the South Dakota Department of Health Regional Healthcare Coalition. So within that, we have certain responsibilities as a fiduciary. They get $125,000. They do all the planning. We simply complete the fiduciary responsibilities in my office and then they're looked at in the auditor's office also. So there is a 10% administrative fee for that, which is different than some of the other grants that we work with. And then there's also a couple of different contracts that need to be executed within the grant and everything. And we do those as fiduciary agents. So once again, we've done this for four or five years. We haven't had any notable deficiencies or anything that have been noted in audits from the state of South Dakota. So I would ask the commission to authorize myself, the emergency manager, to sign the agreement and then execute the required documents as we go through the grant process.
Any questions for Lynn? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Oh, you have- next is item number 11. Consider a motion to approve increased maximum rental assistance allowance for emergency relief. Lori, good morning.
Good morning. Lori Montes, Human Services. I am asking you guys to consider a motion to increase some of the rental assistance that we provide for emergency relief services in our office. If you can take a look at the chart, we've not asked for an increase in the limit since 2013. Obviously rental costs have increased since that time. And so we're asking that you consider increasing the amounts allowable for the two, three, and four bedroom units in particular by increasing those at $100. That just allows us to better meet the needs of the clients that we see. We find that even in partnering with some of the other agencies that provide assistance, we're not able sometimes to meet that client's need for what that rent amount is. So this would greatly help us be able to do that.
Any questions for Lori? Commissioner Bender.
Lori, I'm curious. In your memo, it said that this increase wouldn't require an increase in your budget. And I'm curious why that is?
Just in looking at this year's budget, where we're at as far as access, we wouldn't- we're still fine with our budget amount allotted for that line item. And so we wouldn't need to be asking for any additional funds for this year.
Commissioner Karski.
I should know this Lori, and I'm embarrassed for asking, but how many months can a person receive rental assistance? Is there a maximum?
There is not a maximum that we have. We often say it's one-time assistance and try to stick to that, but it really depends on a person's situation and what is happening with them. So sometimes, in particular, I think of folks who are disabled and kind of in that process of waiting to get approved for disability and have no resources at all, sometimes we will do more than one month. But there isn't a maximum limit.
Typically, it's a month is what we-
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
And there's quite a rigorous protocol to go through before you ever get assistance for anything from the county. I think that's one question I get frequently. It's like, you guys always pay for everything. No, it's really hard to get money from the county for rental assistance or electrical assistance or something. So it is quite the process.
Right, yeah. There's an application process. They sit down, do a face-to-face interview with our ER workers. And then a lot of times, they're left with a pending list of items they need to provide in order to get that assistance.
Any other questions for Lori? I'd look for a motion.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion of second to approve the increase in emergency relief funds. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Lori.
Thank you so much.
Item number 12 is consider a resolution authorizing commencement of a civil action. Donna, good morning.
Good morning. Donna Kelly, on behalf of the State's Attorney's Office, here today concerning a salvage yard that is being operated in unincorporated Minnehaha County in a light industrial district without a conditional use permit. I'm here today seeking authority of the County Commission to institute and proceed with a cause of action against both the tenant and the owner of that property, seeking injunctive relief in a court case. So we are asking for your authority to institute and proceed with that cause of action. We are also asking for authority to resolve and terminate the cause of action at such time and upon such conditions as are in the best interests of the county without any further authorization from the Board of County Commissioners. So it's a twofold resolution that we seek from you today.
Are there any questions for Donna? Commissioner Bender.
Can you explain how we got to this point? I mean, we don't just randomly sue people. There's been a process where we've tried to resolve this.
Sure. So planning and zoning, the department has been in contact through letters, through correspondence, with both the owner of the property as well as the tenant of the property requesting that they cease the activity out there because it is in violation of the county ordinance. The tenant at one time earlier this year had filed for a conditional use permit. He appeared before the zoning and planning commission. The zoning and planning commission denied the request for a conditional use permit. And it was not appealed beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Commissioner Barth.
This is more of a comment, I guess. Certainly, this has been a sore point for people that live in that area. We've been contacted by neighbors, by the city of Hartford, by Chamber Commerce people in Hartford. And the person who's operating this has just chosen not to cease operating without- since he's doing it without a permit. We really have no choice but to take action to stop it. My only regret is that we can't take quicker action in cases like this. But I think most planning and zoning takes some time to bring the law into bear on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Need a motion? And this would be a roll call vote? We need a motion and a-
I'd make a motion to approve this procedure.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a roll call vote.
Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Bender?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Hager.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you Donna. Item number 13 is commission discussion on the 2019 provisional budget in preparation of September 4 budget hearing.
Good morning Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. The end of the latter part of July, you passed a provisional budget, which is on the screen right now in front of you. And next Tuesday, September 4, is required by South Dakota law, you will be holding your next budget hearing on the 2019 calendar year. So in preparation for that meeting, if you have any additional thoughts, discussion, things that you want us to prep and bring to that meeting, I know Kim has come up. She'd love to take some notes. If there- or if you have any questions for her to ask, if there's things that you want to have considered for next week, that you'd like us to do some financials on or proposals on, we're more than happy to do that. Just looking ahead, the budget is to be passed the very last Tuesday of September. And you only have three meetings in September. We have September 4 with a budget hearing, September 11. You are off because of the State Association meeting, September 18. You will meet and then September 25. So our lives revolve around Tuesdays here. So we know those dates.
That's right. From the commission, I wish I have a couple of things. Commissioner Benega?
One of the things that I would like to have considered, and I'd ask Kim to come up with where that monies could come from, would be the Facilities Department has taken on new responsibilities or added responsibilities, if you will, throughout the county. And the director travels to just about, I don't know how many buildings that we have currently that he's inspecting and repairing and doing maintenance work. Frankly, he's spending quite a bit of time at the fairgrounds. What I would like to do is to see if he, instead of using the vehicle that he has that he frankly owns himself, to have a county vehicle, preferably a pickup, if you would, to be able to go around and continue to do those kinds of work orders and complete most of those things internally rather than subcontracting a lot of that out. He has done, and his staff have done, a tremendous job in saving us money over the last couple of years by doing it ourselves. And to continue to do that, I think he needs the transportation and the ability to haul the kinds of things that he needs to haul, along with the fact that frankly, we need to continue to do maintenance and inspections on a more frequent basis. So I would ask that we look for an alternative, if you will, to his current transportation and consider a vehicle that he might be able to use for many, many years to come.
Did Kim- Kim, did you have anything on that where we might swipe some money from? Or were you going to have to just add on the bottom line or? Which on the spot?
Good morning Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. At this time, the only real significant change to revenue projections will be the impact of the centrally assessed utilities. We do not have those figures yet. Expect to have them late this week. But historically, that has not been a source of much additional revenue at this stage in the budget process because we estimate an impact of that. So unfortunately, no, I don't have any new revenue sources to add into the current projections.
A couple of places that I've looked at that I think we can reconsider. And I won't give you a number because I don't think I'm an expert like you are. But the two areas would be the rental income that we receive for jail subcontract. Looks low to me. And the second area would be frankly, what we do with equipment that we sell. That's the salvage value, if you will, goes back into different areas of the general fund. If we could use some of that for purchase of a vehicle. And I do know we have a lot of salvage that we sell on an annual basis. And just review, if you would, those income numbers.
Sure.
I'm Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Commissioner Benega, do you have an idea of how much money you would need? I've got a 10-year-old two-wheel-drive pickup truck. In any case-
It's got signs all over it though, Jeff.
Not today.
Oh, okay.
But I, you know, I know that a pickup truck can go from 20,000 to 75,000. And, you know, that's something we could inquire on also.
Well, I think it's going to depend a lot on frankly, where we can identify the dollar amounts and what those dollar amounts could be before we spend any money. But more importantly, I appreciate your offer for the pickup. I do think that we would find something that we could use that would meet the income that we would derive from those two areas.
Sure. I have three that I would like to bring forward for discussion. I'm going to throw all three of them out there because they kind of all maybe tie together, maybe not. I've talked to everybody individually, but just to kind of tell you where I was going and I've talked to staff a little bit and I've talked to Kim too, and also the departments. A couple of positions I think that we should consider hiring. The Public Advocates Office currently has a part-time assistant, is that what I want to call it, in their office that does all the extra work for them. And that person has resigned. And so we'd be filling with a part-time. And I'd like to have us consider filling with a full-time person. Julie did come and ask for that during her budget cycle. That position would cost 31,000. I think it's a well-spent, well, yeah, we would have to do it now because as they have not refilled that position, so it'll be the end of this year. It takes a while to go through the cycle. So I'm guessing it's going to be a while before that position is even hired. But 31,000 added to our budget for next year. I think it's money well-spent when you think that you've got attorneys doing work that we could be having an office assistant doing. My next one is for the- and Julie's here, if you have questions. The next one is the State's Attorney has asked for a computer support person. That total is 61,744. The additional staff support for the State's Attorney's Office will help all of us, well, not us, but all of the criminal justice side of it because we're helping to get our evidence moved forward quickly instead of languishing and waiting and where our attorneys are waiting and it just backs up everything in the court. And I think it's money well-spent to move our system forward as we're trying to make changes in our pre-trial system and to get to move our cases through the court system. And I see that as a benefit to both sides, both the public advocates, the public defenders, and the State's Attorney's Office if we're getting that evidence ready quicker. And then my last one is the public safety assessment third person. We have two people that we hired in January. We've been putting that department together. And I think they have finally, they're up and running as in a few weeks ago where they do an assessment of, not an assessment, they do a background check of the person who has been arrested and present the judge with the information so that they have more information in one concise area to inform them of this person could be released on bond or under personal reconnaissance or whatever and know that they would come back for court or if they can be, or if they should be held. It's just another tool for the judges, and the judges have been using this. Currently, we have two people staffing that office, which is a very small office. And you can't cover sick days or holidays with a two-person staff. That position is 52921. I've had very preliminary conversations with a few people from- that contract with us that possibly with some more information, they might be interested in funding part of that position in conjunction with Minnehaha County because it would also give their judge this information and hopefully to expedite people getting out of jail that are sitting and waiting that could safely be released. So that, if that particular PSA, what's what we call it, Public Safety Assessment Staff was hired, it would probably not be till November or December. And obviously, that would hinge upon conversations with other partners that are interested in at least having a conversation. I'm still getting numbers together for them. And so that's kind of what- that's where my- and then bottom line is, so that total of those three positions is 145,000. And I know this is a sore subject, but the Public Defender's Office has a professional services budget line. That's 267,000, I think. And this last year was budgeted for 131. They have gone over their budget. We're aware of that. We've all had that conversation in the past when they've gone over. We've always been able to use salary savings in that office to cover those shortfalls. This year, I just talked to, I had talked to all of you earlier and I talked to Kim again this last Friday. She said there's about a $50,000 savings in personnel budget so far through the end of July in that budget.
Correct.
So my thought would be to take those funds from that line item, which is at 267 right now for 2019, which was 131,000 for this year's budget. So it's a huge increase. It would still leave about 121,000 in there. If I get funding for the additional PSA, that would bump that back up to another 26, almost 27,000 farther up than I have. So that was kind of laying it all out. You guys have heard this once before. And I brought it forward for discussion. I did ask Erin and Julie to both to come up in case you had questions. So I will stop talking in case someone has a comment or a question or- Christian Barth.
Kim, are we experiencing some savings, for example, in the Public Advocates Office with a vacancy there? Or has that not happened?
In the Public Advocates Office?
I think he's thinking about that she's got a vacancy right now and to fill that position before the end of the year.
Right. So that's, that person is still there? We don't have salary savings yet?
Julie's probably better to-
She is no longer working there. She was a part-time position. So there is some savings going on. I don't know the number right now.
I'm sure that's probably true in several other departments as well where there's vacancies. As I look at with correctional officers resigning today. Anyway, that might be a number that we would want to have as we deliberate on this. And furthermore, I guess, I'm not sure, even though I was fairly hard on the Public Defender's Office, it seems to me like the expert witness issue is sort of a, it may be well out of that department's control when you, when you have the judges making these decisions. It's, you know, like trying to corral a greased pig, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
And Commissioner Hager is right. She did take the time, which I really appreciated, to talk to each one of us about this. And as I said, I'm not in support of taking the money out of the Public Defender's Office to pay for these new positions. I agree that all these positions are, have merit. And, you know, as part of what we struggled with when we were, when we did all the budget hearings. And, but I don't, I don't think, it's, it's an issue that we have talked about in the Public Defender Advisory Committee meetings. You know, a lot of it is driven by the number of homicide cases that they've had to deal with, you know, which is not an expense that you can plan for very well. But I don't think that, I don't think it makes sense to fund these new positions on the back of the Public Defender's Office. We had acknowledged there were struggles in that office when we agreed to fund two new positions there. And taking the money out of their budget, you know, basically is counterproductive to that effort. So, you know, while I would, if there, if we, if we discover a money tree and we have some other way of funding these other positions, I might be certainly willing to discuss that. But I don't think that that's an appropriate revenue source.
Commissioner Karski.
As the Chair of the Public Defender's Advisory Board, we talk about this issue a lot. And yes, the budget went up a lot because that's from last year to this year, simply because that's the need. And they're over the budget by a significant amount. They've been able to absorb that cost simply because of unfortunately, a higher, from my understanding, higher than average turnover of attorneys in that office. And that's why they have all this extra money. If we take that money out of there, we're not going to have that extra money to take care of this. And they're, they're doing what they're tasked to do in my mind, and that's present a budget on what they expect their needs to be. And that's what they did. And it's based on historical expenses. I don't know how robbing Peter to pay Paul is in our advantage in this situation. And I do agree that, you know, the other positions are needed. We had the opportunity, you know, we're using every penny of our opt-out in this upcoming budget. And we had the opportunity to decide if we wanted to increase that opt-out, if we wanted to do this. I think that buggy left the station and we're going to have to deal with what we got for this year.
One of the other things, if I'm sorry-
No, I'm acknowledging you.
One of the other things that we made assumptions about when we started the budget this spring, early spring, was turnover frankly. And as we well all know, our budget's based on about 65% salaries plus benefits. And with the turnover issue that we estimated, we have some savings occasionally based on those numbers.
The, we really take all of that into consideration when we recommend the level of cash applied that we can include in the budget. And so while it is true that we historically have significant savings in salaries and benefits compared to budget because of vacancies, turnover, delays in filling new positions, that is part of that cash-applied factor that we're building in to balance our budget. So we assume we're always going to have those savings.
Right. And I, that's a great way to look at it. And I want to continue that process. What I guess I'm asking is for you to take a second look to see if we're kind of on track for the numbers that we thought we were going to have this particular year because that particular line item is the biggest line item that we have. And if we're off by 1%, that's significant. Before we make a final conversation about this, and I agree with the other comments that have been made, I just want to verify that where we're projecting that number to be is accurate.
Yes. I did look at numbers about a month ago. We've had two more pay periods since then, so I can rerun those figures. But at that point, we were trending to be on target to meet our, we probably won't dip into our cash reserve by the end of the year. But again, I'll rerun the numbers, see if anything has changed significantly from-
Well, you usually are very accurate. That's not my concern. My concern would be is that we definitely have the opportunity to look at that one more time because it is three quarters of the year has been spent, so to speak. And when we made those assumptions, it was only a third of the year.
Correct.
And I, I'm going to jump on the wagon again. I think all of these positions, obviously, we did budget a long time ago. I've thought about this many, many, many days. All three of these positions are extremely important. And I think that they move the ball faster through the court systems, all three of them. And it's money well-spent. Obviously, we have figured out where it's coming from. But I think that it helps every one of these departments by having these positions. And I will remind you that with the Public Safety Assessment Staff person, when we started this to make the commitment to moving forward with a public safety assessment, we put aside $300,000, which we did not use. And so we started a program that now we have not completed to staff. And so just, you could go back and read the narrative in our budget information and it'll give you a better idea of what that position does other than me just telling you. And I will continue to work with partners that bring people to our jail to see if we can get additional funding for that position. So I guess we'll probably talk about this next week or the end of, the end of September before the end of the budget. So, thanks, Kim.
If there's nothing else, Commissioner Benega?
I just have, when we went through the budget process, those were, to be very blunt, not very well attended by the public. And obviously, today, we have a little bigger audience. I just want to tell you and your staff that you guys did an incredible job in that budget process. For the years I've been around, we've been within 1/10 of a percent in most of the line items total for the budget that we've projected and for- the line items total for the budget that we've projected, and for the accuracy that you have shown, we do appreciate all the things that you put together for us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Kim. I will have to say that the Public Advocates Office is here, not here today, but that's not because they didn't try to be. So they, they did know, but they were not able to be here, so it wasn't like we were trying to jump on them. They were... Oh, there's Mike. Sorry, Mike, I didn't even see you. You're like, not in my sight of vision, so they are here. I apologize. Okay, we're going to move on.
I'd just like to say that if the four of you had supported me in opting out for two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars, we'd be able to buy a pickup truck and hire three people.
You were right, we could have, we could have. Thanks, Jeff. Item number fourteen is a Minnehaha County Liaison Report. Are there any reports for this week? Seeing none. Is there any new business? Commissioner Barth?
I guess I have a concern that decisions and direction have been given to departments in advance of a discussion and a vote by this, this commission. And specifically, I'm talking about the idea of moving the emergency management onto the fairgrounds. You know, we've not had a vote on it, we've not had a public discussion on it, and I know it's scheduled for our Building Committee next Monday, but, oh, next Tuesday, sorry. Isn't that our Building Committee?
No, it's not. No. Oh, well, it won't be, because we don't need it on there.
Okay, well, anyway, I just don't like the idea that department heads are being told what to do in advance of an agreement by this commission. And certainly, as you know, I can get excited about this or that, I'm just trying to plainly bring it up, that it's discouraging to me that that happens. And I'm hoping that we have a full discussion before we make that kind of decision.
Well, I'm not sure where Mr. Barth's coming from, but I can read between the lines. Unfortunately, I don't think his assumptions are correct. When you ask for people to provide information before any decision or discussion comes up, you want to make sure you have accurate information. The due diligence process is done basically by the people who run the departments and know their organization well. They also know the ins and outs of their budgets and where they're at with grants and all those kinds of things. And in the emergency management conversation, you and I are both on that conversation on a regular basis, and last week, when we had the opportunity to hear from the mayor in the metro management particular arena, he has included a training facility in his CIP process for future use, and that's going to include the Highway Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Highway Patrol, potentially, emergency management, the Sheriff's Department. All of those things are things that frankly, were new items to us, at least they were to me. And he explained it in great detail, that that's an opportunity, but that's, that's one of those decisions that you do the due diligence, that you get the information first, and then you decide if and when it needs to be brought into a conversation with department heads and with the budget-related issues and their effects.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
There are a couple other things I'd like to mention for a sec, and I guess I don't know if this is new business or old business, but I wanted to mention John McCain for a minute. I saw him a couple times in my life, and he once said something to me, which was, "How you doing, fella?" Anyway, it was really an honor to have, to be around him and to watch him over these years. Having served in the military myself, I, any experience I have pales in comparison with his sacrifice and his commitment to our country. I never was captured, tortured. My health was never destroyed by the enemy, et cetera. What a great man, and I'm sorry about his passing.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Barth. Did you have another?
There is another comment here. I'll wait for just a second to be a little lighter, because that's pretty heavy. But I would like the Auditor to give us a report on how he plans to affect an election this November that maybe is a little more error-free.
Is there any other new business? Okay. Is there any old business? I look for a motion to recess the commission meeting, and we will re-adjourn for a executive meeting session in about ten minutes. So I need a motion to recess.
Removed. Sided.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are recessed.